Good evening. I would like to call the reorganization meeting to order.
I would like to call the reorganization meeting to order.
And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a free and indivisible, with a reason just for all.
Item B on the agenda is the election of officers. So I would like to open the floor for the vote for the chair at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Scott Lazo for chair of the school committee for the upcoming fiscal year.
So we have a nomination for Mr. Lazo for chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Page seconds that nomination. Do we have any other nominations on the floor at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to open that up for discussion. Is there any discussion? No discussion?
As a candidate, I'd just like to comment that I understand that it's a big job to be the chairman, and I do have a tremendous amount of experience, but there's always new things to learn. I just want to bring strength, unity, and experience to the chair. And most of all, I'd like to bring team concept. So all seven members, once we get the other member on, will be all part of a team. Although we will not agree on everything, I think the one thing that we have to remember is doing the right thing because it is the right thing. And I think that's what we have in front of us. We have a lot of work ahead. I'm excited. I think the committee's excited, and I would accept that nomination if confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote for chair.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes, for Mr. Lazo.
Mr. Levo absent. Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Abstained.
Mr. Lazo?
Scott Lazo.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
We have four yes, one abstention, and one absent.
So congratulations, Mr. Lazo. You are the chair, and I'll turn the seat over to you.
We'll move on to agenda item of the vice chairman, B2. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Raymond Page for the vice chairmanship.
Nomination on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
The nomination and a second for Dr. Page. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If no further nominations, I declare the nomination's closed, and we will put it to a vote. Roll call vote.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Abstained.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
We have five yes and one abstention.
Dr. Page, you are the vice chairman. Dr. Page, you have anything to say at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I want to say is I'm looking forward to a very productive year. There's a lot of work to do, as we all know. We have new members on the committee, and I really wish all of us in the community the best for moving the school district to Southbridge forward. Thank you.
Dr. Page, can I be seated with the vice chair?
I didn't realize it was the vice chair.
At this time, we'll move on to agenda B3, secretary. Do I hear any motions? The secretary?
I would nominate the superintendent for secretary, Acting Superintendent Cheryl Stanton.
Second.
Is a motion the second? Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? All present? Moving on to the recording secretary. Are there any motions?
I nominate Julian Collins, recording secretary.
Nomination on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is a second discussion? Any discussion at this time?
One...
Dr. Page?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that my understanding is that if there is a person in central office that's capable of taking the minutes, that that person could have that as part of their job responsibilities. And through you to the superintendent, I would ask clarification on that because I'm not 100 percent sure myself.
Madam Superintendent?
Can you clarify the question?
The question is, is that is it possible that it's part of the job description or part of the job for somebody in the central office to serve as the recording secretary?
To my knowledge, it's not at this time.
Okay.
Part of any job description or job duty.
Okay.
I would need time to look that over.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent, is there anybody else that put their name in for that position, or is this the person that is the only one that put their name in?
I am not aware that anyone has requested to take the position.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I know...
Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that coming up, we're going to be discussing the central office reorganization. So I just had questions regarding that in the agenda. So I would move at this time to table that motion to a time certain.
Is a motion to table to the next school committee meeting?
Yes.
Discussion? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That would leave us with no recording secretary for this meeting or our coming-up meeting at 7:00, our regular committee of the whole meeting.
At this time, if there's a motion on the floor, and that's what I have to work off of, I'm sure the professionalism of this lady here will complete the night. I don't understand some of the issue, but there's a motion to postpone till the next meeting. And so that's what's in front of us, and that's what we have to talk about postponement. Bringing up that whether you're going to finish this meeting or not. I'm sure that you'll finish this meeting. I mean, you're getting paid for the evening, so to speak, so I don't think that would be... I would have to ask you, would you complete the evening?
Yeah. I mean, I've never come across this before, so...
Okay. I thank you very much for your professionalism. So she will complete the question and answer as far as completing the evening. Is there any other discussion on motion to postpone? If there's no motion, no further discussion?
Was there a second on that motion?
I thought, right, Dr. Page seconded that motion.
No, I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Is a motion seconded? My mistake. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Moving on to agenda C, day and time of regular meetings. Day of the regular school committee meetings. Do I hear a motion on the day and time? The day?
Mr. Chair, we were given a proposed schedule in the packet.
Yep.
I would just like to amend two of those dates, if that's possible.
This is the day.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah, this is the day. So what we're going to do is, normally it's been a Tuesday unless there is...
I'll make a motion that we continue to have our meetings on Tuesdays.
Second.
Is a motion a second on Tuesdays at 7:00?
I'm ready.
Time for commencement? Okay, the day.
Two different motions. One first. Tuesday?
Tuesday. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? The time of commencement? Do I hear a motion?
I motion that the time of commencement be 7:00 P.M.
Is a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Levo? Is a motion the second? Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to subcommittees. I would just like to comment at this time, there are no subcommittees in place. As far as appointments, not knowing who the chair is going to be, being the appointed chairman, I would like to notify all the committee members, and we'll talk about the vacancy later. If there are any subcommittees you'd like to be chairman of, or if there's a preference of what subcommittee you want to serve on, please feel free to call me and let me know. And at the next meeting, I will have the list of subcommittees printed out through the superintendent's office. Moving on to E...
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me.
Should we approve that we're going to actually have a policy negotiations and budget and finance subcommittee at this time?
Unless they've been abolished, they're still in place. And nobody has abolished them from the previous year.
Interesting. Thank you.
Does anybody want to change the committees? I should ask that question. Does anybody want to... We can talk about adding or tweaking them later. I know previous school committees have felt there were certain areas that you want to be put into the mix, but these are the standing subcommittees by law. Go ahead.
I know last year, we had the curriculum subcommittee in place, and when the previous superintendent had resigned and Ms. Stanton had taken over as assistant superintendent, we put that subcommittee on hold because there was no one to work with. So I would recommend adding that, or open for discussion, just to see how the other committee members feel to reestablish that curriculum subcommittee.
So there's a motion on the floor to create the curriculum subcommittee, to create discussion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Page. Discussion on curriculum subcommittee to be added. Dr. Page?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason we put the subcommittee on curriculum on hold is that that is not technically an area that the school committee has purview over. And so what we decided to do was, rather than have an additional subcommittee, and at that time, we didn't have a budget and finance subcommittee in place, so we kind of created that one, was to have regularly scheduled curriculum updates from the curriculum office to the school committee, to have the school committee have an opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback to the superintendent, really as a committee of the whole in that case. So in my view of that, having served on that subcommittee for a couple of months while it was in existence, I thought at the time the decision made sense to put it on hold, and what I see now is there probably is not a reason, in my opinion, to bring it back as a subcommittee in that point. So I just wanted to make that clarification as to what the history's been for the past year. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the curriculum creation of the curriculum subcommittee?
No.
I would just like to comment, previously, we put curriculum in, so the school committee had a working committee with the curriculum department, and would feed back to the whole committee. Although it's not in our purview, we do fund it. So it's a budgetary item, so there was a recommendation from curriculum usually because they did the work on it, but if there was a problem with it, and it was eliminated for some purpose, it is not under our purview. Any further discussion?
And if I may, just to follow up on that, that was pretty much the consensus at the time of the entire subcommittee, was that most of the items were coming up in other areas that would be in purview, like, for example, if we were going to spend money on certain software and things like that, those were the kinds of things that we were discussing, and then it just didn't make sense to have that subcommittee at the time.
Any further discussion? If no further discussion, all those in favor of creating the curriculum subcommittee? Opposed? Unanimous? Not created? Any further discussion on the subcommittees? Moving on to the acceptance of the rules of order? Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion a second? Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Motion to adjourn? We'll adjourn for five minutes, and we'll reconvene a regular school committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second? Roll call.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
All yes?
It's being adjourned for five minutes, and we'll reconvene. Call the meeting to order. Agenda item number three, public input. Before we get into public input, there are different opinions on where this belongs. We will iron that out so we're all on the same page. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Roll call. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present at 7:25.
Mr. Bishop?
You imagine it.
Mr. Lazo?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mr. Levo?
Present.
All present?
We have a quorum. Moving on to agenda item number three, public input. I just wanted to comment, I'd like to get an opinion on this. We had a legal opinion that said it had to be outside of the agenda because we're a meeting in public, not a public meeting. So tonight, we're going to leave it the way it is, and we'll just discuss it later. Maybe I need to be brought up on some changes. But as far as public input, is there any public, or any people would like to address the school committee? Would anybody like to address the school committee? Nobody to address the school committee? Moving on to agenda item number four, approval of consent agenda. A, meeting minutes of June 29, 2015, committee of the whole meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is a motion a second? Are there any additions, corrections, or deletion to the minutes of that meeting? If not, anybody that was not there or was not elected yet must abstain. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Two abstentions. Moving on to chairman's announcements. I don't have any real announcements. I just want to make a comment. I'm very honored and humbled by being the chairman of the Southbridge School Committee again. It's been many years since I've been up here, and we have many issues and hurdles to jump over, and I think that creating a team concept is something that comes easy to me, being a coach, being a father of five. I think that, you know, working together is what it's all about. We are going to disagree. There are going to be issues. We're going to be miles apart, I guess. That's the nature of government. But how we handle our problems and how we move forward is going to be judged by the people of Southbridge, the state of Massachusetts, and everybody watching us. There has been much delay in certain areas and rush in other areas. What we have to do, and as chairman, I'd like to be the chairman that would provide the leadership and strength to guide this ship through the rocky waters, so to speak. We have a superintendent search, which we are going to put on the fast track. We have some issues that we want to refer back to the subcommittee to reconsider and discuss. There's much talk in the community for the last three months, and I think now it's time to go to work, get the input, and put the pieces where they belong, so to speak. Some are there already, and some we have to add to. But we heard them loud and clear as far as the needs of the district. And what I would like to do is, if there's no objection, I would like to, I would be pushing for a meeting next Tuesday of committee of the whole to discuss in one agenda item, which would be the interim superintendent slash superintendent search. So the committee can have a meeting to put together the process and discuss it. I don't want to be the chairman to say, I appoint the search committee, and I'm appointing this, that, and this. I want the input of all the committee members. We're going to start this team concept right on the get-go, and we're going to get out of the gate with a quick meeting to get direction, feeling, and input from the committee. So I would like to have that on Tuesday, the 21st of July, at 7:00. I'm plugging that in now because we have a joint meeting on the 20th with the council at 6:00 to pick the vacant position of school committee member. So starting this as soon as we can, but having all the committee members in place would be the quickest, would be the 21st. Is there any objections from any of the members on that date? If not, Madam Superintendent, could you post that?
I just, I can't commit to that. I just don't know. I have to check my work schedule and stuff.
Okay.
I do have something I need to check into on that date.
Is there a better date closer to that, next week? That would make it more palatable to the two members?
I could commit to Wednesday, but not Tuesday, at this time.
I can get back to you offline. I just, I have to check my schedule before I do.
I'm going to let this go to unfinished business, and what we'll do is, I'll entertain a motion from the committee, if we have to waive the rules to get it on the agenda to move it forward. I think that we need a meeting immediately, and I'll leave it up to the committee to decide what day it is, what time it is. But the 20th is not a good date because of the joint meeting with the committee of the whole, with the council and the school committee. Okay, I have no further announcements as the chairman. I would just like to, I'm excited to go to work, and let's get some things done, and I think we have to create, as I always say, a good atmosphere. We have to rebuild the optimism and confidence in this district to stop the exiting of our employees and students. So we have a lot of work ahead. Thank you very much. Madam Superintendent, are there any presentations? Agenda item number six, presentations?
No.
Moving on to reports, agenda item number seven, school committee, subcommittee assignments. They will not be assigned till the next meeting. Moving on to the finance director.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Will those reports be on the meeting tentatively scheduled for next week? Those assignments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the finance director.
Okay. You have before you, I've put on your seats, a statement of financial position. This is somewhat cursory, but it gives you a sense of where we stand at the end of the year. The front page, for those of you who are new, the front page of my financial reports show a 30,000-foot view. You can see each of the major areas broken out, district wide, special ed, and then the four schools. Below that, as time was of the essence, you'll see that I didn't categorize everything as I usually do. We only posted final salaries at the end of last week, so I was able to pull some cursory financials, disencumber some salary items, and we are in a position where we should be net to the positive for the year with balances in most of our revolving funds. So I believe we're going to be in good shape for the 2014-15 school year. If you have any questions, I encourage you to digest them. Obviously, you're having very short notice to take a look at it. You're welcome to take a look and contact me directly. You also have, in your packets, a memo along with a budget recommendation. You'll note that this budget recommendation matches the town budget. We spoke about this in the last meeting, and it was requested that we have a very specific list of the changes between the two meetings that were held. You have before you, I think, a pretty detailed list of each and every item that was revised to get us to an even budget, a budget that is even with the town budget. My strong recommendation is, now that we have a balanced budget, a budget that meets the town recommendation, is to get it approved. And let me, before, you know, people gasp, the reality is, we need to have a budget to pay bills, to do some basic things. We're not going to spend it all down in the next month, I hope. So we, once that is in, if the school committee wishes to change the budget, move line items, do whatever it wishes, they certainly may. That's at their discretion. But at this moment, I would like to make sure that, and we will not stop paying people, but I would like to make sure that some of our bills are paid in a timely manner. We have some internet security bills and things like that that will be coming quickly. And then we can get to the detail of, if the school committee wishes to alter this budget, we can go to that next. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions of the finance director?
Mr. Osborne, I'm looking at the 2015 report, and something that caught my eye quickly is, the school committee legal central, I mean...
Yes.
Last year's budget was $57,000. I believe we've budgeted $57,000 again in this year's budget.
Yes.
As I looked over it over the weekend. However, we in fact spent $220,000 in the past school year.
Yes.
That's a sizable difference.
Correct.
And I maybe through the chair to the superintendent, are we projecting to spend $220,000 again this year?
No, we are not.
So you think we'll be all set? You think, you believe the $57,000 will be adequate for our legal expenses?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the finance director? If not, moving on?
Yeah, real quick, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Osborne. So I appreciate the summary. So these are, basically what you've outlined here are line items that we would need to approve to transfer in order to adjust the budget from the time it was adopted on June 9th to the time the proposed adjustments were made.
I don't believe we have an adopted budget. We have, up until, up until, I'm trying, bear with me, up until June 29th, at that meeting, we presented this as an even budget, closing out that $10,000 gap.
Yeah.
We did not have a budget that matched the town's budget. I do not believe we have voted on a budget that meets the town's budget. Therefore, we need to vote and adopt a budget that meets the town budget. We can then move on to amend it as you wish.
Right. Thank you. I think my recollection was the $10,000 budget gap...
Yes.
...existed at the time of the vote for adoption of the budget, because we had to adopt it by the 15th, is my recollection.
Yes, and I don't know, I don't know is that we formally voted. So what I'm hoping is that tonight, we can vote to adopt this, at least as a budget to start moving forward with. And as per budget revisions we made last year, things like that, the school committee has complete direct discretion over line items, and we can move those as you deem necessary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Osborne. One more question. In terms of the projected surplus for this year, do you have an idea of when that number would be final?
Probably a few weeks. That surplus will then carry over, and that will be used to pay any existing encumbrances or any oddball bills that come up in the next year.
So it is possible to carry those funds over and utilize them for...
For one year. The town allows us to keep it open in a separate fund. They move that balance into a separate fund. And we may use that to pay, you know, I mean, I hate to say, but there's always, you know, that oddball bill that comes through, things like that, and it's an effort to give one year to realize that some things may not come in. Things happen. We also have some utilities that just haven't been paid yet because we don't have the bills.
I see.
You have some utilities, we have some utilities that just haven't come in yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Finance Director? If not, moving on to C Superintendent, Central Office Reorganization. Madam Superintendent?
I would actually like to start with the update, if that would be okay, to go out of order. I have with me tonight Dr. Sally Dias from DESI, who has been our Plan Manager, actually School Works, I apologize, been our Plan Manager for quite a few years now. And I will invite her up to speak as soon as I have read a letter from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm very pleased to announce to the committee this evening that our AIP, our Accelerated Improvement Plan, has been approved and we are eagerly looking forward to working to implement the plan. So I would like to read into the record, "Dear Superintendent Stanton, we are pleased to inform you that Southbridge's 2015-16 Accelerated Improvement Plan, AIP, submitted on June 26th, has been approved. A careful review of the AIP gave us confidence that Southbridge has developed an effective strategy for focusing the district on the systemic improvements necessary for improving student outcomes. SE's meeting with district leaders on July 9th further illustrated the depth and the quality of the plan. The 2015-16 AIP is particularly strong and cohesive. It provides clear focus for the work of educators in the district, addresses systemic root causes of low student performance in the district, quickly targets the instructional core, and sets the stage to build long-term, sustainable capacity to improve teaching and learning in the district. In addition, the three main goals of the plan, rigorous, effective, data-driven instruction, a tiered system for academic and social emotional support, and a united, supportive, and effective climate align well with SE's research on effective practices for school turnaround. To achieve these goals, the district needs to carefully support and monitor the work of all educators every day. We acknowledge and applaud the inclusive process that was used to develop the plan, which included gathering meaningful input from district and school administrators and from the faculty at every school. SE's research has demonstrated that this type of broad, wide involvement in plan development is key to the effective implementation and sustainability of a district-wide improvement plan as it helps all stakeholders achieve a common vision for what needs to change, why, and what is needed from everyone to make that change happen. The success of the plan, however, will be determined by the extent to which it is carried out by the stakeholders at every level of the district. Southbridge's AIP provides clear direction for the work that needs to take place over the summer to set the stage for dramatic changes in teaching and learning. We will be looking for evidence of full implementation of the plan, beginning this summer and throughout the school year. As we noted in the meeting with you on July 9th, plan benchmarks require minor clarifications to ensure effective monitoring of the district's progress. We anticipate receiving these by July 28th, but expect the district to immediately begin implementing the strategies outlined in the plan and to use the plan as the focus and guide for all work this year. In addition, we expect the Southbridge School Committee to develop a goal that describes how it will support this plan's implementation. We will be happy to work with the committee to support the development of this goal. Southbridge will continue to receive support from an SE Plan Manager team and the SE Plan Monitor will continue to observe relevant district activities two to three days per month. Monthly highlight meetings and public quarterly monitoring reports will also continue. We commend you and your staff for developing a focused and ambitious plan to improve students' achievement and support their emotional growth. The plan holds great promise for students in Southbridge. The next and critical step is for the district to implement the plan with fidelity. Sincerely, Brooke Clenchey, Senior Associate Commissioner, Office of School and District Improvement, and Russell Johnston, Senior Associate Commissioner, Center for Accountability, Partnerships, and Targeted Assistance." Sally?
Thank you, Superintendent Stanton, Mr. Chairman, the school committee members. I think the first thing I need to say is congratulations. I don't, I'm not prone to exaggeration, but this was really an amazing process. The, DESI was absolutely effusive in their praise of the quality of the plan, the strength of the leadership of the district, the commitment of people who were involved in the planning, and the involvement of all faculty members at every school. I think I, I've been involved in working with school districts in a number of plan developments and I don't think I've ever witnessed a plan that came together with such clarity and with such consensus on what the issues and the problems were that needed to be solved and the design of the strategies and action steps that needed to happen in order to improve the education for all students in the district. I think people in this district are absolutely committed to that plan and I'm, I'm really pleased that I will be able to, to be working with them this year to, to, to implement it. So congratulations again to all of you and thank you.
I'd like to take a, the opportunity to say very publicly, thank you to the staff who participated in the creation of the plan. I think that this plan has been in process all year long as we have been working with the old plan. We realize where the strengths of the old plan were and we continued those. And we also understood the weaknesses in the old plan and corrected them with the new plan. Each school has a voice in the plan. Our next steps are to have the school improvement plans fully aligned to the AIP and we look forward to that work. On to Central Office Reorganization. In your packets this, this evening, you have the old Central Office Administration for 2014, 2015. As you see, given the budget constraints that we are under, we have decided to make some additional changes. We have already eliminated the Director of Operations. We would like to and propose the elimination of the HR Assistant and the creation of the HR Manager Full-Time and the responsibilities for school committee oversight and working with school committee and, and getting packets together would fall to the newly-created Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. It seems to make more sense to have one person working with both the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent and that person working with school committee to make that communication very smooth. We would also like to reorganize the business office and that would include a small change to the grants and facilities. With the elimination of the Director of Operations, our grants and accounts payable, I'm sorry, our accounts receivable person was one position. We would like to separate that out and keep our grants with facilities and then create the accounts payable receivable position, which is a standard position in, in business offices for school departments. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Gogden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions on this.
Sure.
And one would be that admin assistant, when, I know we have job descriptions, but that was my concern at the beginning of the meeting, is I was told in the past that many administrative assistants are also the minute takers of school committee meetings. And in previous meetings, we've run into the issue where we needed information from the Superintendent's Secretary and we've had to call her during meetings. So that was my concern, is if we could add that to the job description of that admin assistant to be the minute taker of school committee meetings. So that was my first question, kind of concern. I don't know if you could answer that. My other concern is, on this paper, I don't know if it's been updated since we received it in our packets, but there's, the principal of Charlton Street School is actually missing from this structure and I just think it's maybe a typo, but I think that should be added to that structure.
I apologize, yes.
That was it. I, I know in the previous budget too, there was an elimination of the accounts payable receivable position, but I see that it's in this new Central Office Administration. So that was just another concern as well. So I don't know if you can answer any of those.
We've, okay, so instead of eliminating the position, we are redistributing a workload and the decision was made to eliminate the HR Assistant as opposed to a position that was currently filled.
Okay. And then I didn't know if you had an answer on the minutes.
It's not in the job description as written, so that would have to be added to the job description.
And actually, I do have another question concern. Under the principals, I know in the previous restructure plan of the middle school, high school, there was a concern about adding a middle school principal, so I don't know if that might be added to the office and administration restructure plan as well, or thought was taken into for that.
Yes, in considering the budget reduction, there is not sufficient funding for that position at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have a question. Has this been the budget Subcommittee for Budgetary Impact?
No.
So this is your proposal?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we're not looking for a vote this evening on this, are we?
I don't see it on...
Yes, an open session after executive session.
All right, I, I can't make a motion on this yet then.
After executive session, open session. Is there a reason why this is after executive session?
Yes, there are some items that need to be discussed in executive session that impact the reorganization.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, move on to C2, Commission on Disabilities Donation.
I'm with Mr. Bishop on all of the paper, I apologize. So I am pleased to announce the acceptance of a $250 donation from the Commission on Disabilities. We are very thankful for the work that the commission does in supporting our special education students and I just wanted to make the committee aware.
We do not have to vote to accept donations any longer? I know we used to, to accept funds.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, I believe that that policy revision is still under readings. I'm not sure which reading it's on, but I'm not sure we've had three readings and adopted that, that amendment. So I think technically we probably still have to adopt. It's adopted? Oh, okay. My, my, I apologize. So over three, over 250, we don't...
Okay.
We don't need to, but thank, thank you for making us aware.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, School Committee Action.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I just did have another question. It was under the AIP that had been approved. I, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Assistant Superintendent Stanton. I know we had received the AIP prior to submission, but it, there were still different things that had to be worked on. I would definitely love to jump on board as a school committee and, for the AIP. I would just like to be able to receive the updated copy that was submitted to DESI to be able to...
If I might make a recommendation that that be part of the agenda for next week?
That's fine.
And I will have copies of the AIP available.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, School Committee Actions. A, Vote to Approve Annual School Committee Meeting Schedule for 2015, 2016. Does everybody have that in front of them?
Summated.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to this calendar, if I can do so. I'd like to request that the meetings in December be held on December 1 in '15 rather than 8 and 22nd. I know the 22nd, the majority of people have got other things to do besides school committee stuff, so I think that if we could move those up, and it was an extended period between the November 17th, so we would have been, you know, we'd have been quite a distance. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the proposed calendar.
There's an amendment on the floor. Do I hear a second to the amendment?
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion on the amendment? There's no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion on the main, we have a main motion?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Okay, one abstention. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on the calendar? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 8B, Vote to Assign Members to Sign Payroll Warrants. One member plus one alternate. Do I hear a motion or a volunteer?
I'll make a motion. I think we have to do this, but I make a motion to assign a member. Can I pit one?
Does anybody want, I mean, what usually happens is somebody that volunteers for it and usually it's somebody that's in town that can go to the town hall, such as a retired fellow like yourself or somebody that's in town. I know I'll be in town and I'm used, I'm going to be in the office, so...
I'll do the alternate.
You'll do the alternate? I'll take the...
Perfect.
All right, I will take the, the one member and Mr. Olivo will take the alternate.
Is that a motion?
Yep, we need to make a motion for that.
So I'll make a motion that Mr. Lazo be the member assigned to sign payroll, payroll warrants with Mr. Olivo being the alternate.
Is there a second? Is a second, any discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on, Vote to Assign Members to Sign Expenditure Warrants, Expenditure Warrants. Three members plus one alternate.
Summated.
Well, I, I will volunteer for one.
Second. Did we have a second already?
We have to volunteer first.
There's a motion and a second, but we need the names.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I believe that we need to have a majority of the school committee members sign that warrant as it constitutes a vote or we can bring it to the school committee and have the majority of the members vote on it. That is what is required by law.
Are there three members that want to do this?
Four, we need four.
Four members, well, the alternate, yeah.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, I believe...
Is it a typo?
I believe my colleague is correct and we may not have been doing this accurately in the past. The signing of the warrants is a, is a vote effectively, is my understanding. I don't know the legalities of it, I think my colleague does. So we probably need, what we, a recommendation might be to have four designated members and any school committee member be alternates. That way we can ensure that the expenditure warrants are signed with a majority vote of the school committee.
The signing of the warrants was always four school committee members, any four. I don't know what this is, this is new. So we never voted anybody to sign warrants. The warrants were in the office, all members were notified and if, the minute four members showed up, the warrants were all set to be, to go forward. I don't know what this is, to be honest with you, it's on here, but I'm going to just, let's back this train up a little bit. Motion to table this. Motion to table it because they...
Mr. Chair, I believe the purpose behind having the designated expenditure warrant signers was so that there is not this chasing down of people. And if you have a set, a set group of people that are going to do it, and then any alternate that would be probably sufficient as opposed to, okay, I got Mr. Ozil in, I got Ms. Gogden in, oh, let me call this person, this person. So if you have the four people set, then there's not chasing anybody down, it's those four people that you... It's those four people that you can contact. It was my belief or my understanding.
Mr. Chair, I think we have to take this vote tonight because their warrants will come up between now and then for the end of year that need to be signed. So I would recommend if it is what you would like to do, to say that any member of the school committee is can sign warrants, and then we label four people as the four top go-to people so that the Central Office has the ability to track them down more quickly, and then that way we know who's signed or who hasn't signed at that point. So I'd recommend that we have four people assigned with all other members as alternates available to sign. Would be my recommendation. So I would volunteer.
If that is what the school committee wants to do? Four?
Is that in the form of a motion?
Let's get four people, and then I'll make a motion.
Oh, okay.
So I would volunteer to be one of the four.
I'll do it. I'm in town. I mean, I'm in town all day.
Mr. Bishop? Dr. Page? Ms. Quinney?
Need one more.
And Mr. Olivo?
So I move that Ms. Quinney, Dr. Page, Mr. Bishop, and Mr. Olivo be the four primary expenditure warrant signers with all other members of the committee available or allowed to sign such warrants in their absence.
Second.
So you're going to amend this to read, four members, and the committee will be... All the rest of the committee will be alternates. That's the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Is amendment on the floor? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on amending this to four members of the committee and the rest of the committee being an alternate? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all presence on the amendment. Now the main motion as amended. Vote to assign members to sign expenditure warrants, three members, plus all other members would be alternates, the four members being Quinney, Bishop, Condon, and Page.
Oh, Mr. Olivo.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olivo. Sorry about that.
Point of clarification, it's four members.
Right.
Four members, right. Quinney, Bishop, yep, four members. Any other discussion on the main motion as amended? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished business, A, Request the New Athletic Positions. Do I hear a second? Go ahead.
If I may, at the last meeting, we had requested specific information regarding the newly requested positions or change of positions, additions of positions, and that is not the information that I received. I don't know if anyone received specific information on that, but that is not what was in my packet. So I think, again, I would request that we receive the budgetary impact of those newly requested positions, the change to the positions requested, as well as any additional supplies, transportation, all those costs be outlined as opposed to the entire athletic information.
Do we have an athletic director? There was such turmoil over that. I don't know if we have an athletic director?
Yes.
Can we have an athletic director in front of us to also present, maybe?
She was present at the last meeting.
Oh, she was? Okay, okay.
Yes.
And if I may, this came, and then it was the end of the school year, and there was vacation, so I was not able to reach out to Ms. Capera to clarify. So we did include the information. I'd also like some clarity around oversight of the athletic director. It has been my understanding that that was related to the high school. However, I think at this point, it really does need to come under the Central Office so that we can have some clarity around athletic programming and the budgetary impact.
Ms. Quinney, would you like to postpone this for further information to the next school committee meeting?
I would like to remove it from Agenda Item 13A. I'd like to strike that from the agenda. Second page?
13A?
Mm-hmm. Return to open session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Second.
Is a motion a second? Discussion?
Yeah. Should this go right to the Budget Subcommittee?
It could.
I think that's where this belongs. I don't think any action should be discussed or taken on this until... Let's go through the Budget Subcommittee. I don't... I look at... I really looked at the budget, and I don't think we have a lot of money. This really needs to be brought before Budget Subcommittee, explained, detailed, before I'm going to take any... Before I will vote in favor of any such action.
Well, let's handle it when it comes up under open session. There's quite a bit of open session votes after the executive session. Well, no, I'm... An unfinished business. We're going to have to retract your motion second because this agenda is very, for me, very confusing, okay? I've never seen an agenda like this, and I've been chairman for like six, seven years. My thing is, if you're going to unfinished business, request the athletic positions, I'm sitting there, and you're voting them over here. I'm like... It looks like it's chopped up to me, and I'm not sure. You know, we're going to jump to one agenda item and then another agenda item. Just take it out of unfinished business, put it right here under where you're voting in open session, but it says open session, but it just lists. It doesn't say unfinished business.
Right. We have a motion and a second to remove that currently.
Can we retract the motion in a second? It's the format of this, of the agenda. You're voting on... You should be voting on unfinished business, but you have it at the end of the meeting under open session. Open session is not an agenda item. Unfinished business is an agenda item. That's why it's confusing when you refer it back, and I apologize where it goes to Agenda Item of 13, open session, and it says vote, 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 and then adjourn. Open session's not an agenda item. It has to be either under unfinished business or new business. So for me, I thought we were taking it on under this agenda item because it says the request for new athletic positions. So I would ask the members to retract, and we'll deal with it at the end.
I remove my motion.
I'll remove my second.
Okay. When we get there, we can tackle that.
We just wanted to take it off.
Right, right. And when we get to it, we'll take it off. But right now, we'll just...
Are we not discussing that any longer?
We can discuss requesting of the information that you were looking for.
Well, I just wanted to get some clarification, Mr. Chair, through you to the superintendent. On the second page that was given to us, there are several positions that are not in any contracts and don't have a contract, and we're paying people for positions that I have never seen posted. So there are a multitude of them totaling $9,809 that I would like some clarification on as well, as those positions technically don't exist as they haven't been created by the school committee and aren't present in any contract at this time. So that's... We'd probably go to Budget Subcommittee as well, but that was very concerning. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, going on to unfinished business, Superintendent Search. Here's where I'd like a motion from the committee to have a meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever the flavor is, 7:00 on the 21st or the 22nd, to move forward on the interim superintendent slash superintendent, so there's open discussion for this committee to get rolling on what is going to happen in the future. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to hold said meeting on Wednesday, I believe seemed to be the best for everybody, Wednesday, the 22nd at 7:00 PM, and I don't know where we would have it.
Room 100.
Room 100. I believe it's air-conditioned.
I'll second that motion.
Is a motion second, discussion? If no further discussion, can I have a roll call on that, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Same.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
We have five yes, one abstention?
Motion passes. We will have a meeting on Wednesday, 7:00 on the 22nd of July. Moving on to new business. The next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, date, location to be determined. I thought we did that with the...
28th at 7:00 here.
Yep. It's in the calendar. Again, we don't need a motion on this. We've already approved it. So it's on for the 28th of July, 7:00 PM, Council Chamber. The vacancy, Agenda Item Number 10 on the new business vacancy of the member seat, the member seat of the 2015-16 year. The vacancy was by Mr. Abrahamson. The meeting, I've talked to the chairman of the council, everybody's talked to him, is the 20th, Monday at 6:00 in the council chambers.
Mr. Chair, I'm unable to make that, and I guess I wasn't included in everybody, nor was Mr. Olivo.
No, nobody talked to anybody, but everybody was calling the chairman, he said. Everybody's trying to find out from him. I had nothing to do with it. I wasn't chair. He was seated last week. We waited a week to get seated, so we didn't have anybody. I mean, the members called, I guess, but I, you know, I happened to see him and ask him when... He actually texted me tonight and said, whether the chairman is, to tell him it's the 20th.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, yep. Agenda Item Number 12, Executive Session, A, Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, C...
Point of order?
I'm sorry.
Agenda Item Number 11, Members Forum.
We're so on the bottom of this. Agenda Item Number 11, Members Forum. I apologize. Members Forum. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to thank the voters that came out in the local election. It was a smaller than we would like to see turnout, but the people who came battled a warm day, and I want to thank everybody who did come out and vote. Hopefully, next year, we'll have twice as many people voting. I'd also like to, through you, Mr. Chair, to the superintendent, at the meeting on the 28th, is it possible that we could have the school handbooks discussed at that time? I mean, it's getting late. School starts, I think, somewhere around the 23rd, 24th, somewhere in that range. I'd like to have a... Be able, if we can get the handbooks. I remember last year it being done extremely late, and I'd like to make sure that we don't do that again.
That may be a little aggressive. Part of the AIP is to include the new instructional focuses, FOKI, in the handbooks, and the ILTs may or may not be meeting, so I will have to touch base with the principals.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else on the Members Forum? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank the district for their response to the unseemly allegations against a member of the... Former member of the school district, and the way that that was handled, and how parents were made aware, and meetings that were provided for community to get information, have their questions answered, and have their fears allayed. So I would like to thank the district, especially Ms. Stanton, for her handling of that situation. I think the community really came together and did all that it could to ensure that it was clear that students' safety and best interest are at heart in this district. So I know you are only an acting interim or acting at-will employee, but I think the professionalism that you exhibited in that situation is outstanding and should be commended. Thank you.
Anything else on the committee Members Forum?
One of the things, I believe this is going to be Mr. Osborne's last evening with us?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure yet? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the Members Forum?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to congratulate the Southbridge Little League team who won the state championship. I was able to be part of the rally only for... Towards the brief end of it, but it was nice to see people come out in the community to support this team who's headed to Delaware. I just wanted to congratulate the team, the coaches, the parents, and thank all of the people who have donated so far, and to encourage the community to send checks to the Little League and help donate for their trip this weekend to Dover, Delaware. I think it's a great thing for this town. It's definitely a positive, and I wish them the best of luck, and I hope they win. So I just wanted to congratulate... We have some students from our high school that are on that team, as well as members of our community, and I want to wish them the best of luck. Go team. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other discussion on the Members Forum? If no further discussion, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number 12, Executive Session, A, Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, C, 38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect onto the government's bargaining and litigation position, and the chair so declares. One, Southbridge Education Association Unit A. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Do you want to do all of them?
Oh, B. B, Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, 38, 20A2, to conduct strategy sessions to preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. One, Acting Superintendent of Schools Contract. Two, Supervisor Maintenance and Facilities Contract. Three, Central Office Reorganization. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
All yes?
We will return into open session to vote for the athletic position, vote approve the budget of 2015-16, also the Central Office Reorganization and adjournment once we get back into open session. We adjourned into executive session. Thank you. Meetings back in order. We're on Agenda Item Number 13, Open Session. These agenda items are supposed to be under unfinished business or new business. This has been discussed by committees before, most of the agenda items.
Yes.
So it'd be under unfinished business. Can I have a motion to refer Agenda Item Number 13, A, B, and C, refer it to unfinished business? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second? What, a motion?
Oh, so moved.
Is a motion second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion, are moving it over to refer?
Yeah, we're going to move... We're going to move B over?
A, B, and C.
We're going to move B over?
Yes, because it's unfinished business. It shouldn't be under open session. Open session is not an agenda item.
All right.
Whatever you want to do with it, we just want to... It's a formality of putting it under the proper agenda item. Any further discussion?
I just have a point of order. Julianne, can you...
State your point of order, the chairman.
That all members of the school committee are present, and that should be documented in the minutes upon return to open session from executive session.
You have the roll call to reconsider?
No.
Absolutely not.
No.
I don't rule in favor of your point of order. Back to the main motion on the floor. If there's a point of order to the moving the agenda items stated, if it's not, it's not a point of order.
A point of order is that we need to document in the minutes that all members of the school committee are present, as well as the superintendent for the continuation of our meeting.
Duly noted. Next, we could have the motion a second to move over A, B, and C to unfinished business. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Under unfinished business, added vote to approve the athletic positions for the 2015-16. Under unfinished business, added vote to approve the athletic positions for the 2015-16 school year as presented. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to, to, uh, refer that to budget subcommittee.
Motion to refer?
Second.
Second by Ms. Quinney. Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
I, I, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I believe we had discussion from...
I'm sorry, Ms. Quinney.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I also wanted, um, further clarification to and the, um, athletic director regarding some of the requests within there. I don't know if they necessarily fall under the budget subcommittee, but, um, requesting a rewording of a contract is, um, not legal. We need to address that at some point, I don't know who that should be referred to, but that needs to be addressed in this, I don't know what you'd call it, request.
You're saying the job description is illegal?
No, the job description is not illegal, however, the request from the athletic director is to reword titles of jobs that are currently contained within a contract.
That, that is, that is negotiations.
Correct. So I would refer that, those requests, to the negotiation subcommittee.
This has to go to budget, and let's have a joint meeting of the budget subcommittee with negotiations after we are, after we get our subcommittees in place. We'll have a joint meeting this way here, you can handle it all at once. Any further discussion? If not, all those, roll call, roll call vote.
Mrs. Condon?
So, oh, oh, excuse me, are we amending the motion? We're amending, we need to take a vote on the motion to refer it to both the negotiations and the budget subcommittees.
I'll second that amendment.
There's an amendment on the floor, in the second. Any discussion to the amendment? If no discussion on the amendment, roll call.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
All yes on the amendment?
Any discussion on the main motion as amended? If not, roll call.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
All yes?
Moving on to agenda item B, vote to approve the 2015-2016 budget as amended.
So moved.
Is a motion second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Page. Discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Abstain.
Mrs. Condon?
Abstain.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Abstained.
We have three abstain, three yes.
But, doesn't pass. Agenda of 13C, vote to approve central office reorganization. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion, do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
There's a second? Motion second, discussion? Sorry, it's Condon.
Um, right now I just don't feel comfortable voting on this central office reorganization because there's a lot of questions regarding, um, the central office reorganization that we still need answers to regarding job descriptions and, um, the reorganization itself, so I would not be in favor of that at this time.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Quinney?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
No.
Mr. Lazzo?
No.
Mrs. Condon?
No.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
No.
We have five no, one yes.
Motion does not pass. Last agenda item D, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.